All right, we'll call the meeting to order for our Brookings County Commission Meeting for June 21st. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Anybody? Not seen anybody? We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or anything to the agenda that we need? Any additions? Okay, hearing none, I'll approve the agenda. Number five, the consent agenda items. I would look for a motion to approve unless there's anything people would like to remove from the consent agenda. Okay, I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Second, okay. Further discussion on the consent agenda. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Routine business, approval of claims.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on claims. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Department head reports. Mr. Hill, would you like to get us started as usual? Good morning.
The Red Cross did come up on June 9th at the, during our last meeting that we had here, and we went over to Western Estates and Normandy Village to manufacture, mobile, manufactured home areas in Brookings. They installed 58 fire alarms and served 66 community members, and the checklist is there on the thing, and it's interesting that 33 of them had pre-existing alarms and only 20 of them were actually working. On a manufactured home, most of the alarms now, especially on the newer ones, are wired in, hardwired. They're still required to be checked, and they do have shelf lives of about 10 years. So, that's something that the public's going to have to understand, and I'm hoping we can continue this on, either in the town of Brookings or throughout Brookings County, and try to spread it out to the smaller towns, if at all possible, in the future. We did get our new pickup, and I am heading down this afternoon to get the new topper put on the back of it. In the claims, we had to check in there, and I've ordered signage for the vehicle, but it's not in yet. We'll get it marked as soon as I can get the stickers from the sticking people. We did have our budget hearings. I'm still employed. June 15th, we had a FEMA floodplain update meeting. They're going to come back in October, and this appears to be, I think in October, we're going to invite at least one or two of the county commissioners to this particular kickoff in October, because we might be able to use some of this data. Even though FEMA doesn't deal with drainage, with the LiDAR image that the state has paid for, I think it's going to be usable in our drainage discussions in Brookings County. And what's interesting is FEMA's starting to take a thing of floodplain, whole floodplain areas, and that's what we're basically doing with drainage, trying to get into a drainage basin type scenario. So, this is starting to look up, in my opinion, and I guess we'll find out more in October. They're doing some processing right now. Later this month, actually at the end of this week, the radio club, or amateur radio relay club, is hosting radio days out at the Brookings, where they shoot shotguns out there east of town. And we'll have our command center out there. They basically set up out of there and run their radios for 48 hours. And then the command trailer will also be deployed for the Brookings Arts and Park later in July, and we'll probably utilize the command trailer this fall in our full score exercise. We want to get it out, now that we got the vehicle, get it out and see if we can make it, make our great plans work like we think they are. I've got some absences listed there. I'm going to be taking some annual vacation, and then I did get requested last week to attend the public awareness working group and give a presentation on our Brookings County pipeline, or the way we work with our pipeline companies in Brookings, on July 13th in Chicago. So, what I've did is I rearranged my annual vacation to come back into Chicago and give that presentation, and then let them fly me back into Brookings. And I'll still be on vacation on that one. And the NACO convention's coming up in the end of July. June 28th, we have a smart growth meeting, and that is the meeting set up by the rural real estate group that the commission has directed me to work with. And that, it's called a smart growth meeting, and that's on June 28th at 3:00 PM. If you want, I can send some more information out through the county commission department if anybody wants to attend that with me. We're supposed to be meeting after they meet with the city of Brookings. I wanted them to get their thoughts on the city of Brookings, and then they come in and talk to us about our growth. There's a state emergency response commission meeting on June 27th, and there's a tri-state emergency management meeting, which I may or may not attend tomorrow down in Sioux Falls. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike? Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Well, the, our office has been getting a few phone calls. Actually, our number of veterans coming in are, that number's kind of going up quite a bit lately. We had almost 30 in the last two weeks, which is a little more than normal. Quite a few of them are coming in for their parents going into assisted living or nursing homes, so I guess the aging veteran population is starting to show its head a little bit more. We did have 98 calls in, 104 went out. Like I say, the 30 veterans coming in are representatives for them, and then the welfare side, we had 23. Rents are still kind of like our number-one concern for most people. Mostly we've been down there is getting ready for the convention that'll be coming up in Sioux Falls and the welfare side of it, and you've probably seen that the, our group is looking at serving at the banquet, and we've been asking for volunteers and stuff. So, I think that looks real positive. Other than that, I do have an appointment that just came up on Friday, and Irene is already scheduled to be gone, so Friday afternoon, our office will probably be, no one will be in our office at that point, but I will be talking with the commission office to make sure that there is some coverage, and as always, my cellphone is with me at all times, and my number's given out.
All right. Anything for Mike? Thank you. Vicki?
You should have received in your packet the finance officer's report for May, and we have four BEAT noted items, the auditors' account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives total, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deeds fees collected. And just to kind of give you an update, we did get the lot house in Siney I sold, and a couple of you were over there, so I appreciate that. It brought $2,500, and that will be approved later in the meeting, and there was a few interested in it, so it's good to have that done, but it won't close until the 15th of July, so we are still keeping up with the mowing and that type of thing, and they boarded the door back up again, so nobody should be able to get in, so. And if you notice too, on the finance officer's report, the surplus cash is up to 35.57%, which is about 5% more than it was last year, and it's pretty consistent. We've been higher, we've been lower, but it's about right in the middle compared to what we have had for the other years. So, otherwise, kind of business as usual. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
No. That was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Hope it goes well.
We've been saving it.
Saving, I guess. Oh, good morning. Just quickly, we have the proposals out and waiting for those to come back in for architect with the jail expansion. Office has been busy, just like the other departments. We're all busy with those home invasions. There's just a lot of good, good inter-agency police work there between the police department, my office, and DCI. Madison Police Department really stepped up too when we caught, was arrested the first person over at, in Madison. So, there's just a lot of cooperation and good effort to get them off the street. We still have one at large, which we have a warrant for, and put a lot out on, we've had a lot of calls of him being spotted in so many different places, but he's got so many connections, we don't, so, but it's just a matter of time. We'll, we'll get him, so. We had a stolen pickup and trailer too, over at Elkton, and the owner of it happened to be up at that time, about 3:00 in the morning, and saw it going down the street. It stayed in Elkton, but, and then the deputies got there and was able to get him arrested and so forth, so he's a, he's been, we just let him out of jail not too long ago, so he's coming in and out on the installment plan, I guess, so. Anyway, last Monday, had a meeting with, I think it was last Monday, with SDSU, talking about the concert that's coming on September 8th, which is going to be a pretty, pretty big deal, and they're looking for 21,000 people, and there's going to be 8,000 people on, on the grounds or on the football field. And then they've hired a, it kind of goes through SwifTeL with Tom Richter, and then they, they got a firm hire too, and they have their own security people, and they have their parking people, and they handle everything on the, on the grounds, and then they look for law enforcement support off grounds and stuff. So far, my, my take on the sheriff's office function will be to assist the highway patrol out on the state highways, such as Highway 14. Not worried too much about when they're coming, it's when they leave. That's going to be in, and they're going to advertise how to get there, you know, certain routes, and try to reduce traffic in town, those types of things, but I'm sure that our role will be to assist with traffic and that type of stuff, and maybe have to assist on, if they have an incident on grounds or something. Premier Bank is a big sponsor of this, so they're bringing in 50 buses alone with their VIPs, so 50 buses from Sioux Falls are coming, so we've got to stage those buses in and out, and so it's, it's going to be interesting. So, but this group that, you know, to this, they say this is a piece of cake. They've had bigger venues and stuff, so, but to us, it's a big deal, and so kind of wait and see how the meetings go and progress with that. I met with the city manager last week too, and I had scheduled anyway a staff meeting. What I intend to do is on June 29th, I'm going to have my staff meeting in VOGA, and that way, their city council's going to come in, and I'll be able to introduce all my staff and stuff. I've got new staff, and, and it's probably good that the public meets my staff and so forth, so it's going to be kind of a little open house. Anybody can come in and meet. So, we're going to hold the meeting over there, my staff meeting, and then they can come in and out. At the jail, we're busy because with what's going on with these four that we have arrested, you know, they don't want them in the same cells, so it's making it interesting for us, and, and we have to give them rec, and it makes more rec, and so it's getting a little, I have to bring in a little more staff also to make sure everything goes smoothly, so, but we're handling it, and things are going smooth so far, so that's all I got. Okay? Well, that's easy.
No.
I have a question, but not on your report. When we started our budget hearings last week, we talked a little bit about the parking lot that's over by the Fifth Street Gym that the county owns. Are you utilizing that parking lot at all for any of your vehicles, or?
No. Sometimes that's overflow for the, for the jail, and it's usually the ones that are sneaking that don't have a driver's license, and they like to park over there, so we, we kind of watch that, but otherwise, we don't use it as much as maybe it was used when, when the courthouse had all the other offices. It might have had some overflow over there, but, but we don't use it for, for anything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to put a camera in the hole.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I've been working with Ted Harder at First District and trying to get the stuff together for him for the grant for 468th Avenue, which is at Dairy. We'll have some involvement in that by administering if we would get the grant and whatever, so that'll be coming up. They delivered the temporary easements for me to get on the bridge south of White, so those should go pretty quick. There's only two landowners there. I haven't heard anything from the state about when Graves Construction wants to have a pre-construction meeting for the bridge north of Bruce, so the best we can say is it's scheduled, but don't know when. The gas pump is still giving us problems, and it's frustrating. However, I think we've got it figured out now that we'll switch the pump in the tank and push the fuel instead of pull it, and that hopefully will take care of it. Again, it won't be cheap, but we'll get it done. And then I also have two things later on the agenda that I'll touch on at that time. Other than that, anybody got any questions? No?
Good. Thank you. All right. Moving on. We'll move on to regular business. Letter eight. Letter A, action to approve resolution 16-18, a resolution authorized in the purchase of P-Rock based upon the price established through the county of Moody in South Dakota bid process. Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any comments? Dick?
Basically, this goes back to the testing we had Foster do on the P-Rock, and it's a little bit better quality, and it's at the southern end, and I guess looking at the finished product, it would be a good move for us to obtain this. And they would have bid ours too when we bid our supplies, but it did not make the time cutoff, so we didn't accept the bid, so.
Dick, is the price comparable to Everest's price?
It's a dollar a ton cheaper, but it'll be a little bit further to obtain it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Everest wasn't a dollar cheaper, it was Johnson's a dollar cheaper.
Yep.
Yes.
A little further to get. Okay. Anything else? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action to approve resolution 16-19, a resolution authorized in the sale of surplus property by public auction.
Move approval.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Miller? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve resolution 16-20, a plat of lots one and two of Kodiak Edition in the southeast quarter of Section 3 Township 109 North, Range 48 West, and the Fifth Primoridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Look for a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Just one other thing, they're going to have a pre-construction meeting at the site on July 6th at 10:00 AM. If anybody, the contractor will be there, so if the board, I was planning on being there, but just in case there would be some concerns or things that you had heard, that'd be a good time to listen in to what exactly will be involved.
It passed unanimously at planning and zoning.
Is this on a hard surface?
No.
Is there a road agreement? I assume.
There's no road agreement. It'll be just a, basically a common use for the, the road. My understanding is it won't be a big-time impact.
It's not anticipated that it should be a problem.
Yeah. Okay.
It's, it's our county road 27, and it just goes straight north to 14, and so I don't know which way, I guess I'd have to find out which way their supplies and their feed and all that stuff are coming from, but for the most part, I think it'll be straight in and straight out.
And we heard this as a conditional use permit, and that's been approved by the zoning board, and has been reviewed by the highway department at the same, at that time.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller? Aye. Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve authorization of construction of Brookings to build the Brookings County Highway Department Maintenance Equipment Storage Building in Siney I, South Dakota, based upon the price established through Brookings County bid process.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All right, discussion. Richard.
Yeah, you got a copy of the bid tab sheet, and we would just need this approval, and we'll send out the notice to proceed, and I would definitely want to accept the option one included, so it'd be $127,700. That option one was to put cement ballards in front of the doors to protect the edges of the doors. It was to put concrete encasement around the fuel tank, so the fuel tank would be up to code, and it was also to put a pad under the natural gas or the propane tank so that that's up to snuff. That's the reason for option one.
Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. We've still got a few minutes before our scheduled agenda item, so we will move on. Commission Director, Department Director, report. Michelle, anything to comment for? Stacy, Stacy's a little under the weather today, so anything there? All right, and she did supply us a report in the packet also, so. Okay, Deputy State's Attorney, report.
Well, just as the sheriff explained at the beginning, we're very busy right now, as you probably read in the newspapers, so many cases that are pretty serious forging ahead. And then also just an update for you on the drug court. Our first official date for the drug court session will be July 7th. The court starts at 9:30. That is open to the public. You're welcome to come if you want to watch one of them happen. It'll be every Thursday at 9:30, and at this point, we've had two applicants, so they haven't been officially accepted, but the team will meet in the upcoming weeks and review, and so if they are accepted, we'd have two participants starting in the program on July 7th.
Any questions? Abby? All right. Commission reports, discussion items. Leanne, would you like to get started?
Sure. On June 9th, I went and Richard was also there, talked to the Lake Campbell Improvement Association Board of Directors regarding the Lake Subcommittee on our, on our zoning maintenance changes, and lots of questions, not necessarily anything that was different than what we were looking at. They did ask whether or not the county would have any interest in, in putting a park out at, a county park out at Lake Campbell, and I, I did tell them that we'd talked about the possibility of a, of a county park at our strategic planning, and that I didn't think there was an interest from the commission in doing that at this time, but if they had a strong enough interest, they should come in and talk to everybody about it. That's how I left that. But it was a good group, lots of questions. I was here for the budget hearings with the rest of you on the 14th, went to the auction in Siney I on the 15th. I did, back on planning and zoning issues, I did have a conversation with somebody from Grant County yesterday, which was interesting, and I hadn't realized all this was going on, and maybe the rest of you know about it. Grant County passed an ordinance to have graduated setbacks for their CAFOs, and then they passed the ordinance Valley, Valley View Dairy, did I say that right? Anyway, they referred it, went to a vote, they had over a 50% voter turnout for the election. The graduated setback ordinance passed by over 500 votes. I've asked Richard to get a copy of what they did to our planning and zoning committee so we can just kind of look at it. We should know what's going on with that, I think, and that's something that when we're looking at our setbacks, whether or not we want to consider anything they did or not will be up to the planning and zoning board, but it is interesting. That's what happened in Grant County. That's all I have.
All right. Questions for Leanne? Larry?
Don't have a lot. On the 14th, they do the budget hearings, and that's about all I've had.
I had budget hearings on the 14th, and I received a citizen call last night wanting to know why our five-year plan did not include hard-surfacing roads in the northeast part of the county, among many other things that were addressed, and I suggested that possibly they should have come to the hearing if they were interested in that type of thing. So, that was the end for me.
All right. Tom?
Okay. Other than the budget, Growth Partnership had their meeting, and we discussed also the, the new bylaws, and they really wanted a commissioner, they're not a designee, and it'll be voted on, July meeting, which should be voted at that time, the new bylaws, which really is to incorporate more border regions, since they're more friendly and we're getting along, we thought we'd give them a couple more seats on there. But that is a meeting, then I'm gone the 9th to the 16th. I'll miss the commission meeting, and I'll miss that meeting. I asked if one of the other commissioners, they'd be fine with one of the other commissioners company? They said yes. I said, can they vote? And Duane says, I'll look up the bylaws, because it says commissioner, doesn't say me, and so if there's any interest, I guess let me know, okay?
When is it?
It's the, July 15th. The meetings, well, start at 11:30. No, the meetings really start at noon, but 11:30, everybody comes, they usually have a lunch, and we sit around, visit a little bit, and then the meetings start around noon, so.
Are any of you able to go?
How long do you leave in that?
Well, that is always up in the air. I, I would think in the summertime and looking at the preliminary agenda, just the oral one that Duane's laid out, is it'll probably be 1:30. They go on a lot later, but I, you know, 1:30.
I can go, or if you want to use...
Nope, if you can go, that's fine.
Okay, great. And then we'll find out whether you can vote if there's, yeah. So, that comes up, and I, and I think, I think everybody's aware, hopefully, that on the 23rd at 2:00, General Mills is having a ribbon cutting. They're, they are going to be in the facility with the lab, and you'll, you'll hear all about it, and it's not a lot of people, but it's a huge first step, and they've shown a lot of interest in Brookings and SDSU. SDSU kind of carried the ball on this. It's all about research and oats, and it is a huge first step, and...
Did you say 2:00? I saw the email, but I didn't write in my calendar.
Righty.
2:00, right? I missed your question.
Is it at 2:00 on Thursday, June 23rd?
This is Thursday, yep, June 23rd, so I think following that, 3:00 is Chequins Fell farewell, if you want to swing by there. That's all I have.
All right. I had Affordable Housing Task Force on June 9th. We're making headway there, we're crunching numbers to try to get a handle on affordable housing, renting, home purchasing, inventory, the whole works there, so made some, had a good meeting there. On the 13th, went, had a BDC meeting, had very good discussion there. Those meetings are usually, it's every quarter we have, like, that's, we reserve about two and a half hours on those BDC meetings. we reserve about two and a half hours on those BDC meetings to try to get some dialogue back and forth. And, and that was a very good meeting with a lot of dialogue on what BD's plan should be, what, for the future, what we should be focusing on, workforce, housing, attraction of businesses, how we should go about that, what they should be focusing on. Do we recruit? Do we build within? And the discussion kind of came back that the majority of the members want to work on incentives to expand from within and not necessarily go out and recruit all these new places to come here, except when they, they did say they still want you to recruit, but very specific types of, of businesses that would not necessarily compete with the labor force that we have already existing. So a lot of research, a lot of tech businesses rather than more of the manufacturing, so. Their focus isn't going to be going after new businesses wanting to come and try to attract and go get them all to come here, since we have, do have a shortage of labor. And then also entrepreneurial is really becoming a, a large item on their agenda too, so that's, that's gone, gone real well. So anyway, it was a good discussion there. Obviously, we had our budget meetings on the 14th, and then part of, on BDC, remember I was on a DOT Property Task Force, which is a discussion on what to do with the DOT property over there northeast by Whiskey Creek and around there, then the Wees Business. And so there'll be a discussion on how, what to do with that and try to, how we're going to develop that, what we should do. So that'll be a recommendation to the city and that kind of stuff, so. Was on that, and that's, that's about it, so. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I'm, I'm big, we've had a discussion a little bit about Growth Partnership the old days, that used to be body count, and how important it is, especially when you have low unemployment. Body count isn't where it's at. It is what retention and expansion is your best economic development tool, and that to go after the more high-tech, this is, if you're, if, we have a lot of people out of work, we want jobs for anybody, you know? But right now, we want the most high-quality jobs that we have. It's time.
And I know we have a public hearing, but I have one question for Commissioner Miller. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
But first, I wanted to ask Michelle this. Do you have an email distribution list for the townships? You know, I, I know there was some conversation about townships maybe not knowing what we're doing as much as they could go online and look at our website and see our agenda and do that. It is in the paper, it's all of those places. But to email a copy of our agenda, if Michelle had a distribution list, would be a three-minute thing?
That's the problem. They, most, they don't have the emails.
Mm-hmm. But, but I think that, that we could get, it's, I, I've been thinking.
They don't have email. They don't go on computers. A lot of them don't.
Okay. But could we give them the opportunity on that or, or not? There's a concern from the townships, or at least one township, that they don't have a good enough knowledge of what it is that the county commission is doing. And our township relationships are so important. Maybe this is something where we could reach out on a PR matter and just say, if you provide us with a copy of an email contact, whoever your person is, there'll be somebody, that we will put that on our distribution list and email you a copy of our agenda for each commission meeting, if you would like one. May, maybe you don't want to fiddle with that, but that'd be very little work and basically no cost to us to do some public relations with the townships.
Well, it would eliminate the argument.
Michelle, Michelle.
Okay, well, let's get the scheduled agenda item, and then we'll come back to that, go from there, so. Scheduled agenda item for 9:00 a.m., a second reading and public hearing of the ordinance 2016-01, an ordinance licensing and regulating peddlers operating outside the boundaries of incorporated municipalities within Brookings County and within the incorporated municipalities of San Ei, Bruce, Bushnell, and Elkton. This is a public hearing, so we'll call, we'll open the public hearing to any comments, and we'll first have proponents. Are there any proponents to this ordinance? Any proponents? Okay, hearing none. Is there any opponents? Any opponents to this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for action and discussion.
Did either Marty or Terry explain this when we did the first reading?
No.
Okay. Well, this is something Marty and I have been working on for a couple of years, actually. It was a few summers back when we had some issues with some transient merchants or peddlers out in the county. And the city has this type of regulation, but we didn't have that in the county. And I don't think it's been as critical of an issue so far this summer, but it's just something we wanted to have in place for future regulation and just to kind of protect our citizens out in the county from this type of solicitation, so. I've worked through drafts, Leanne has worked through drafts, Terry's worked through drafts. I feel very confident that this is a very work-through document, and hopefully, at least, will, will get us through the next couple of years, and we can always tweak if we need to.
Sheriff, any comments?
No, you pretty much summed it up. It's just something that, every year, we have some issues with, with peddlers. And outside of certain municipalities, VOGA has a peddler's license and White does, so we can regulate in that, but in the rural areas, the only thing I have is, is revenue license, sales tax license. If they have that, there's no restrictions for them out there. And, and every year, I have complaints. So far this year, it's been good, so it's, it's, we'll see what, how this goes. The, the biggest thing is going to be informing them once they come, because some, some peddlers come every year, the, some salesmen, they, they hit Brookings County. It's just informing them. Of course, we're going to give them a warning, tell them that they need to come to the finance office and get their permit and so forth, so we'll work with them. The, the true peddlers will go get their permits and follow the regulations. The, the ones that are kind of underneath the radar a little bit will move on.
Yeah. And then, we talked about it before, the reason San Ei, Bruce, Bushnell, and Elkton are incorporated in this, because they, as a municipality, do not have any of these regulations.
Right, right. Instead of making their own, they said they'd fall under ours.
Okay.
And Marty did reach out to all of them, and they did express wanting to be included in this.
And so, and the ones that are not included have their own and do not want to be.
Correct, they already have their ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
We have a motion to approve?
No, we need to get that.
I'll do that.
Second.
Second, okay. Any, any further discussion? All right, thank you for your work on this, everybody. No further discussion, please call the roll.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
That goes into effect 20 days after, after today, after it's published. I may have the dates in my office, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. All right, well, we'll get back to the discussion here on our agenda, or our commission reports about the email, so.
I was just going to say, Michelle, I believe, Dick at the highway, you'd have contact information with all the clerks, and Marty probably can help you with some contact information with the townships also. I suggest contacting the clerk or whatever, and they can contact the five or six individuals within each township.
Okay, sounds good. We have a scheduled agenda item at 1:00 for continue our budget hearings. Is there anything else, or going to recess? Okay, all right, well, declare us in, yes, okay.
Marty, Stacy wanted to let me know that it's 20 days after publication, so July 20th for the peddler's license.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I will declare us in recess until 1:00 for our budget hearings.